So, all right, let's go ahead and start the meeting at 6:34. Ooh, we got a little bells, too.
Sorry.
Celebrate.
You should do that every time.
Yay, let's start the meeting.
Um.
Zach liked it.
So, 6:34, first order of business is public comment. I don't see anyone in the room, and I don't see anyone online who looks like they're for the public. So, um, so we can move to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Anyone?
Do we approve the consent agenda?
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Great. Um, second, Merrick, student update, please.
I'm on it, hold on.
All right, so Zach's gonna start us off with the agenda, and then we'll alternate from there.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, so this is our agenda. Um, we're going to start with a public statement from the representatives. And then we're gonna go to our normal current events at MHS. Um, we're gonna talk about some feedback, um, that we've gotten over the year, but with like a positive spin on it. Um, and then we have our updates and our closing. That is our agenda.
All righty, so yeah, just as Zach mentioned, we thought that we would put together a statement regarding recent events. So I'll go ahead and read that to the public and the school board now. So, "The wave of gun violence and associated threats over the past months and years is appalling. It is incredibly frustrating for our community and just our wider nation, world, to continue for these events that, and tragedies to continue occurring. And in the wake of these recent events, we think it is crucial that we are conscientious as a community, both on what we notice and how others feel. Our schools should not be a target nor a place where anyone feels unsafe. Our school community should not be one where students or staff feel nervous being a part of. And there is nothing funny about so-called jokes. There is nothing funny about anything said that makes others feel uncomfortable. There comes a time when we, as a community, really have to come forward and recognize what is wrong. And we commend those students and staff who came forward at Montpelier High School over the past week. These are difficult times, and we believe that we really need to start asking ourselves, what more can and should we be doing to stop these tragedies from occurring again and again? How much more harm needs to be done before we take action on what we universally condemn?" So, thank you for listening. Now, on to some current events, other current events, I guess, in our community.
Yeah, um, thank you, Merrick, for reading that, and thank you, the board, for listening. Um, our upcoming events are the MHS concert, which is tomorrow at 7:00 PM. Um, and it's a joint concert between orchestra, chorus, and band. It's gonna be lots of fun, and you should go.
Um, and coming up really soon is graduation on June 10th, so our seniors right now are about to leave us for their next, their next steps in life. So, it's really exciting and also kind of sad.
And then, another thing, uh, June 1st is the beginning of Pride Month across the world. Um, and that Pride Month commemorates, uh, LGBTQ+ community, um, and the past and present, uh, fight for freedom and equal rights. And here are some different events that are happening in Montpelier that you should also go to, because they'll be lots of fun.
And then, so, as Zach mentioned, we often bring a lot of negative things that we hear, just some of the bad news. But we thought, as we close this year, we would end it with some of the things that students really appreciated with MHS and our wider community. Um, so, at MHS specifically, I was getting a little ahead of myself, but people really appreciated having a morning break. That was a really nice time for people to get a bagel, get some food just in the cafeteria, or just hang out for a minute before their next classes. So, I think that a lot of students at MHS in particular would really love to see that or something similar next year. And then, something else that I, I say, and I'm sure many other students say, as they've come through their MRPS experience over the years, is that our community is a very welcoming one, and I think that's a really strong part of Montpelier. And, yeah. And then, this is something specific for me, but I thought I would give a shout-out to my English teacher, DMA. There was one summative recently where it, we were, our class was doing essays, but me and another student, we thought that it would be interesting to do something different. So, what we did was, we did a little podcast instead, which I thought was kind of in your, in your spirit, Libby, but, yeah.
And you will give to me to put on our social media site, right?
I'll, I'll send it to you if you want. I think it's 11 minutes, so it was kind of long, but...
Along with your movie that you made in another DMA class.
That was only four minutes, yeah.
That, so I'm gonna interrupt Merrick for a second.
Go ahead.
And DMA has a film class that they did their first annual film festival, right? It was the first ever, I think.
Yeah.
First one I've ever been invited to. And students in the class showed their very short videos, and I have to say that Merrick and his peers was quite funny, um, and lovely. And some of them were awesome, and some of them were thought-provoking, and some of them were just funny. So, we're working with DMA to get those up on our website as well, because they were awesome.
Yeah, I totally agree. I thought that was, I thought that was just so, so cool, and it's so different from the normal tests and summatives that we really do all the time. So I thought that was really a breath of fresh air. But this was for DMA's other English class that is also available to juniors. And, yeah, we did a podcast, and it was just really fun, and a little break from doing traditional essays all the time, which I think me and the other student who did it really, really liked a lot. And then, yeah, just some other things that I think students across the district, and particularly in the high school, really enjoyed, enjoyed this past year, was having more choices, I think, this year in particular, with some project-based things, such as the film, and such as that alternative summit that I just talked about. And also, something that I know students really enjoyed was having free lunches, free meals. This was, like, I just know a lot more students were able to get access to school lunches here, and I thought that was really, really positive. And, yeah, just all of our teachers, custodial staff, and administrators, we thought that we really appreciate them, and we thought we'd give them a shout-out in our presentation. So, thank, thank all of you. Thank you. And, yeah, those are some of the things that we talked about this year.
And then, for our closing and our updates, um, some updates on our curriculum discussions that we've been having with Mike Berry. Um, we discussed the proficiency system in MHS and how it's implemented right now. Um, and then, we're looking into polling graduated seniors to see, just to get like feedback from them, and see what they wish they learned, what they thought was really useful, a bunch of different stuff to sort of gauge how they felt prepared for college.
And then, yeah, looking ahead, we're hoping to, especially next, next year, or the year after, so forth, looking to really help guide future student school board representatives, just like in that beginning stages of like, what are they, what should they be doing? How can they engage with their community? And just also, certainly, these presentations that I think that future student representatives should also do. Um, yeah, so just maybe kind of defining that a little bit more for them, and certainly working with the next student representatives to, um, just like, make sure that they're the best ones that they can be. And also, looking ahead, as we close off this year, we're going to consider meeting with Mike Berry and other administrators to think about our curriculum and our instruction next year and beyond. So, that was our presentation for today, so thank you all. If you have any questions.
Small comment? One of the slides you had, you only bring bad news.
Yeah.
I don't, maybe I'm off-base, but we don't see that as bad news. We see that as good feedback from the students. At least, I appreciate that. I, I, I at least don't think that hearing from students and hearing what the pain points are, or where you think attention should be given, is a bad news.
That's all. Yeah. Thank you for that. I just think that it's certainly nice to also bring us some positive things.
I certainly appreciated the thought. I just wanted to point that out, though.
Yeah, thank you.
If you thought that way, it's, we don't at least think that.
Absolutely.
Does the board have a mechanism for documenting the presentations? Is it just in the recording of the entire thing, or the actual files somewhere?
They're all, they, I have them, but they should be all up with the board, board materials each week. I think it's archived on our website.
Okay.
Usually, we, um, usually, we don't get them in the board packet in time. I don't think we have so far, so I don't know.
But Anna will put them up afterwards.
Post, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I appreciate all the work.
Thank you.
It really has been a breath of fresh air to just hear that it's not just, but that you're getting feedback from everybody. So I really appreciate all your work. Thank you. Thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
Wow.
Yeah, no, this has been super helpful.
Thank you.
Do we have you for one more meeting, at least?
Yeah, for sure. And I'm, I'm sure me and Zach are totally on board to help guide the new administration next year as well. I think that's something we really want to help out with.
Great.
Excellent.
Find the agendas and minutes very easily on the website. Like, I see click a lot of, of agenda buttons, and they come back to the same page. That says, "School Board Agendas and Minutes." It has meeting videos in 2022, videos for 2021, agendas and docs for 2020, but 2021 isn't there. Because I have kind of found myself a bit lost.
Are there school board pages on the website?
I mean...
I got strangely, I only see meeting videos on there as well.
Yeah, that must be something.
Okay, I can point it out to Anna. I don't think we need to take time with it now.
No, I'm sorry.
But I can point it out to Anna, who runs this stuff.
It was a couple of hours ago.
Yeah, no, we definitely make that more accessible. Thanks for pointing that out, Red. All right, the next item, any further questions from Merrick's, from Merrick or Zach? No? Next item is...
Budget proposals.
Is budget proposals. Do you want to give a brief overview of, and I always explain the materials of what you're looking for?
Yeah, so the, um, I would recommend to the board to approve a side letter that's in, that was in your packet, to add two additional days to the MRESSA Employee Negotiate Agreement. MRESSA is our instructional assistance. Um, and they, um, I'll give you just a, a brief history that is probably more information than you actually need to make this decision, but may be helpful. Um, about five or six years ago, MR, before the merger, Montpelier Schools had two days of in-service prior to school starting. And the way that that worked was, one of those days was a school-based day, and one of those days was a district-based day, where, you know, the superintendent got on stage and did a rah-rah speech and all that kind of stuff to welcome people back, and had a breakfast, and all of that kind of thing. Um, two days is not enough time for before-school in-service, so, um, we changed the calendar. So we moved more in-service days to the beginning of the year for teachers, so now we have four. Um, well, we have three, with one of them being a parent conference to make it four, um, prior to the school year. And when that change happened, there was, um, the rah-rah day with everybody here in one place having breakfast together, and with me onstage, talking to people. Typically happens on the first day that everybody comes back, and then there were three more days after that, and instructional assistants are assigned to be here for one of those. So, we made the executive decision to have them come on the day that was most beneficial to them, which would be when they're talking about students without APs and making plans, and with classroom teachers talking about students, because that's their primary job responsibility. However, that, that created a situation where instructional assistants were not feeling included in our district-wide climate, because they weren't part of the district-wide, what they perceive as to be a celebration in the beginning of the year. So, the only real way to, to fix that is to add more days onto their, into their negotiated agreement. Um, so through several conversations with the union leadership and myself, um, we came to this side letter to ask for two additional days. The monetary amount that it would cost the district to do this is about $12,000, and it would be considerable goodwill as well in order for this to happen. So the instructional assistants will be able to come to that day where we're celebrating coming back together and be a part of the conversations about kids that are important to their work and being successful in their work. So my recommendation is to approve that side letter to a cost of approximately $12,000 extra dollars. That was not, um, kind of in form of budget process for FY '23, so it would be an addition to that, to the budgetary amount for that, and I think it would be very well spent.
Amada?
Is that from the fund balance, the $12,000?
Maybe, maybe not. It depends on if we can hire all the IRAs or not, which we haven't been able to in three years' time, so maybe, maybe not. Um, if, if we are fully staffed, then yes, it would come out of fund balance. If we are not fully staffed, then it would, it's just part of the salary line that we typically don't overspend on anyway. Okay.
Really good, Joe?
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Not going.
I was just wondering if, um, it looks like the, their representative president would be able to sign on their behalf. Are you expecting any pushback from...
No, so the process, how these kind of things go, is that it's the union president's responsibility to go get feelings from the membership, which Joyce and Corey did. Um, and there were some who were like, no, we don't want to start at work earlier. Um, but the vast majority of them have said, yes, we want to do that. Um, there's a lot of misunderstanding as to why, um, they weren't there on that day, you know? So, we can't get around the contracted issues, like, they are only contracted to work a certain amount of days, right? And so, that, so adding days alleviates that for them. So I think the large majority of them wish to be there, and according to Joyce and Corey.
How many people are we talking about? I mean, approximately, I was wondering.
We have approximately 30 IRAs across the district.
Okay, did you want to?
I was just wondering if you, and if you don't have the answer, that's okay. But do you know, last few years, the salary line, has it come consistently under?
Yes.
Do you know how much?
I don't know how much exactly, but I do know it's been under, because we haven't been fully staffed.
Yeah, that's what I figured, since COVID, it's, it's probably going to be in town.
Yeah.
But before COVID, has it been low, or...
Well, that was only one year of my tenure. So, I believe my first year, we were fully staffed, but I'm not positive. I don't remember it being a struggle to cover, for coverage that year.
Oh, is that true?
Well, who knows? I mean, it was four years ago, who knows?
No, it's not true that only one year of your tenure has been non-COVID. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other questions?
So, this is for the beginning of next year. Is it gonna be rolled into the budget for the year after that, or...
Yeah, that's a really good question, Seiji. So typically, what happens with side letters, next year's a negotiation year for this particular union, so typically, what happens with side letters is the parties have already agreed on that language for the contract, so therefore, it just gets rolled into the next year's contract, and it will get rolled into next year's budget.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. So it will, it will just become, if you approve a side letter, then it just basically becomes part of the, the contract, unless it specifically says this is only for this school year, which this, this does not.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, you can make a motion. Please do.
I make a motion to approve the side letter. The side letter?
For the additional days.
To add two additional days to instructional assistance.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, passes.
All right, I'll have Anna send that to you to sign.
Sure.
You're the one who needs to sign it. Um, the second piece on there is, we've been, um, as the board is well aware, that we've had some substitute teacher shortages across this school year, and we, like many other districts, are recommending the hire of some permanent substitute teachers for the 2002, 2022, 2023 school year. So I wrote up an, a recommendation for you that was in your board pocket. I'm happy to answer any questions about that. The skinny is basically that we would be looking to hire, we may not be able to hire, but we would be looking to hire four permanent substitute teachers, technically one for each school. However, if there's not a need for a substitute, let's say, in Union Elementary School, who has quite a bit of subs, um, and doesn't typically have a sub shortage, that that person would either pick up work that needs to be done at Union, because there's always something that needs to be done at a school, or if there's a greater need in a different school building than that at MSMS, let's say, then that makes two subs available at MSMS for coverage purposes. Um, it's just something that the principals can rely on. Currently, the principals are spending 45 minutes to an hour each day. That's how they start their day, finding coverage for their classrooms. Um, so it would give them back that time. Um, we'd have people we can rely on. We would write, and it would be under an MOU, not under one of our union contracts, but under a memorandum of understanding that would provide healthcare, because we would have to under the ACA law. Um, and it would also give them sick benefits and all that kind of stuff. We made the salary range based on what we pay a typical substitute teacher for a day if they have no experience in our, or no licensure. So that starts at $125 a day, so we just basically multiply it by 178 student days to get the low end. And then the high end is the, what we pay a long-term substitute who does have to be licensed by law to cover like a family leave or something like that. That's how we got the high end. So, we made a range for ourselves, so we could base the salary that we offer on experience with substitution, or teaching in general, or experience in our district, as well as licensure status. Um, so we kind of had that freedom in wiggle room. So the high number, while it's kind of eye-popping at $166,000 or something like that, it wouldn't be $166,000. That would, that's just the high end. If we got four permanent substitutes, all who are licensed and have experienced teaching, that would be, which is kind of a wish list. That's just the, the, the end range. Um, we don't expect that. We don't generally use our entire budgeted line for substitutes, which is around $131,000. Um, we certainly haven't this year, although teachers are covering for other teachers, so that comes out of the substitute budget right now. Um, so our plan would be that we'd hire, see what we are going to pay them based on licensure status and experience, pay out, use the substitute line first, and when that gets used up, or when that gets zeroed out, then we would, um, use the fund balance in order to cover the rest of the, the balance. Um, we, we can't anticipate how much that might be, because this is so new to us. So it would definitely be a pilot year for this system. Um, but we think it may, even if we can get two, it would alleviate some of the burden that we have right now in finding guest teachers for our classrooms. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for that recommendation that was in the board packet.
I have two. The first one is, how often are you, are able to foresee need, so that it's not like a, um, so that the principal has an idea of what the need might look like next week? Or is it usually like a day-of thing?
Yes, and.
Yes, and.
So it's in ReadySub. We use, we contract with ReadySub, which is a software company, and so I can go on and see the absences that are in the system right now for each day next week, but who knows when your kiddos get, as you well know with small twins, right? Your kids could get sick at four in the morning, and you gotta figure it out.
But, so, does it seem like that these roles might be into some of the, these are the high priority needs of those principals that we can see are, are coming up in a way that allows that, that flexibility?
Yeah.
If you have somebody that you can count on, um, that knows your building, knows your culture, maybe you want to prioritize where you want to put them.
Yeah.
And if that is a possibility, that seems...
We could certainly do that. Um, I think I would leave it up to the principals to make their best discretion as to how to do that. Typically, this, the classrooms, particularly at MHS and UES, um, classroom substitutes that, or the substitutes that are in there, the, the job openings that are in ReadySub for, you know, a week or two in advance, those, in a typical year, get picked up, where there's not a whole lot of trouble with substitutions. The, the challenges come more for RVS and, um, MSMS. We have very few subs for our middle schoolers.
That's kind of, that kind of leads into the second question is, the possibility of moving between buildings? Is that something that is in any contract right now? As far as going as far as RVS, is RVS, are there, is there any precedent for any staff going to or from RVS?
Yes.
A little bit?
Yes, there is. We moved an instructional assistant from Union Elementary School to RVS a couple of years ago. It's a, it's an involuntary transfer. So in our contracts, we have language around involuntary transfers, or just transfers in general.
Because it, being such a small school, one-fourth of this, while I want there to be more people in there to provide the highest quality education possible, I also recognize that having that availability across the district, not necessarily just tacked to a building, is more valuable to the district, I think.
Yeah, and, and quite, I put in for four, because it's my wish list, right? So you all can say, no, we're, we're, go for two, or go for three, and that's fine. Um, I don't think we'll be able to hire four. I think that's wishful thinking right now. Um, and so if we can hire two, then we will make a judgment call as to where those two need to go. It might be that they report to central office every morning, and we send them out to the place that has the most need. Um, but this is so new in a pilot that I'm not positive as to the answers right now.
Thank you.
Mia?
I think it's a great idea, um, and a good example of, you know, trying something that we've never done before to, um, address the challenges that you're facing. Um, and I, I'll say I really liked the idea of this, of them being sort of assigned to a school, because I felt like they could really get, um, into this, to the school culture and really know, um, their, their fellow teachers and the students. But I also understand that really the purpose of this is to fill the gaps. So I understand why you would maybe have somebody be between schools. Um, I would, I'm, uh, I'm pretty surprised that the substitute line in the budget is only $131,000 for a whole year. Um, do we usually not spend all that? That's...
Yeah.
Yeah. Um...
We usually don't have a challenge with subs, like, in a...
Yeah.
Even the first two years, so the first year and a half when it wasn't COVID.
Yes.
We didn't have, we didn't have a challenge with substitutes. We had plenty of substitutes.
Right, right.
A Main Street Middle School is the one that was always like, hmm, but we never had people covering each other's classrooms, like, this is new now.
Right, but, but then, then you would think that we would spend all that money, because we would have, we would be paying the subs that we'd be...
Ah, but teachers, but teachers may not take all their time either.
Yeah.
You know? I think that's one of the impetuses for the challenge this year, is that because things like surgeries and doctor's appointments, and that was all put off for a year and a half, and so people could now get into those things, you know? We had more surgeries this year than I think we've ever had in the past four years, but I, because I think people were told to hold off, and then it got scheduled this year, you know? So I think this year may be an anomaly, anomaly, but I'm not willing to take that bet and go through this again next year, if we can try to, if we can try to alleviate it a little bit.
So what was the rest, or like, the thinking behind not having this be a teacher position that is in the contract?
Because we don't have any language in the contract that, that goes with this. So we talked about, we talked about it being adding on to our instructional assistance staff. Um, and then we decided, you know, Heather Michaud and I, who's our human resources coordinator, think it's just, it's just the easiest and cleanest to have 178 days, because then you're not worried about, like, let's say that the need is at MSMS. We don't even need at MHS, we don't even need at US, and we don't even need at RVS. Then I don't need... Then I don't need to go through the emergency reassignment role that I would have to if it was part of the teacher contract.
Oh, I see.
But we just say you're, you know, if it's clear in the MOU that if there's a need in another building and not a need in the building you're assigned to, you will move to it. Like they're, they're signing that knowing, knowing that expectation. It just makes it a little bit cleaner and a little bit less hurdles to jump through.
Yep. And then you're saying they'll have this salary, somewhere in that range, health benefits and paid time off. Are there any other benefits that teachers get that we should consider offering to them to have it be like?
They'd get, they'd get dental too. They'd get dental, health, the vision. They'd, they'd get access to all of that kind of piece with, and the paid time off. I think those are the biggies that people would look for.
Got it. And then if, if we did actually have, happen to get four at the top of the, you know, market or whatever, lost health insurance actually would be more than that.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah. But that's highly unlikely.
Right.
Is what you're saying.
Yes.
And then I just have one other question and then I'll be done, which is professional development. Would they be able to participate in those stays with teachers? So this is really just?
This is just a hundred and seventy-eight student days. So anybody who works with us, who works, who doesn't work, like those days, we'd never say, no, you can't come. We, we, there would just be an agreement that you're not being paid for those, that time. There, there isn't an expectation for you to come to those times, but you're more than welcome to join us.
Yeah. Could we include that? Like how many more days would that be if we included that and paid them for it?
Teachers work a hundred and eighty-five days.
So seven.
Well, a hundred and eighty-eight days, sorry.
Oh, so ten more days.
Yeah.
I would be willing to have, have that be part of the MOU and, and encourage them to join in that professional development by paying them for showing up because the, the one reason that's coming to mind is that we, you know, in sort of little anecdotal spaces or stories that we've been hearing, it's felt like it's pretty much everybody in the school building who could use whatever professional development teachers are getting. I mean, maybe not like instructional, but I'm thinking more about the social, emotional, and behavioral stuff that, you know, I've, I've heard, like, it would be great if our cafeteria workers could get that. And I, and I know that's not what we're talking about here, but if we're talking about somebody who's going to be in a classroom every single day, it feels really useful that they would be offered that as a part of the MOU.
I'd say that is the purview of the board to decide on.
Amanda.
Totally agree with Mia around that. I would love to see that special because they're permanent positions. I would also love to have the dream of four substitutes each for, each, each building because of the culture and like the need, you jump from thing to thing if you know the building well and you know the staff. So I, I, I really, I wonder if there's also an opportunity to think like long-term, like how we can, in terms of like thinking of teaching shortages for the future, like how we could think about a path for these substitute teachers to like, look at opportunities to get licensed in the case that we were to get like the bottom line or if there is opportunities for, you know, would there be opportunities for people already in staff that want to go into those positions since they offer healthcare? And like, I don't know, like everybody gets healthcare? So, okay, so like if there was like that transition from like foot staff to the substitute position, just like thinking of all the opportunities we could get, and I, I think it's great. I, I will, I really would support four positions plus in addition to the days for professional development for them to be able to get paid for that. That has been kind of like a disparity of, that we should think about.
Burke.
Yeah, I also agree with Mia and Amanda. I think that just based on everything that me and Zach have heard over the past few months with students, I think it would be really great to encourage that professional development among anyone that is going to be teaching in a classroom, I think.
Did you?
Yeah, I agree with, with what's been said. I think the extra ten days would be good to make it feel like one team as opposed to two different teams. Almost like just including the IAs for the extra two days, it's sort of the same, same thinking. And I happened to be speaking about this with a high school teacher over the weekend. And we, we said, why don't we have permanent subs? That's, that's a great idea. So we were talking about it very, and then, and I read your email.
Go back to the teacher really.
Done. I got it done for you.
So I mean, my question was practical, which is who would apply for this position? And are there going to be people, because I know that, you know, it's, it's a,
Yeah.
It's, it's a good market for teachers. So it seems like a lot of aspiring teachers are probably going to get actual teacher positions. And the salary might be somewhat low given the time commitment for say, a semi-retired teacher who might want to come back through, through to and supplement income.
Yeah, I think there's two audiences. There's one audience who I just, you know, a person who I, we have a common friend, sent me her resume today, who wants to get into teaching but doesn't have any of the licensure education. Like she's been an outdoor educator, right? She's, she works for Outward Bound or something like that. And we've actually had a few of those who technically in Vermont standards are not qualified for a license, right? But they, they've taught in a different scenario and they, and so this gives them experience. And they could, and if they're on a, a year-long salary, they could use it for their experience and transfer review kind of, transfer review kind of thing. So there's one audience, small, but it's there, it is there. And then the other is people like, there is one person in our community who's a phenomenal sub. He was an IA for us, doesn't want to be an IA. He doesn't want to be attached to a kid. He doesn't, he doesn't want that type of responsibility and didn't enjoy that work specifically. However, he has said to me, if you just had a permanent sub, I'd, I'd do that. You know, and he happens to, this, this particular person has to be an artist, you know, and has other side gigs kind of thing. And a substitute has very low demand, right? Except for your time every day. Yeah, exactly. And you can, you can attack your side gig in creative ways outside of that seven-thirty to three. So I think there, there could be, I mean, I could just be, you know, shooting rainbows, glitter, and unicorns at you right now. But there could be an audience for that based on the side gig economy and where we are right now.
Yeah, no, that makes total sense. And we're not, we're not seeking thirty people, we're seeking.
Right, right.
Two to four.
Ideally four, yeah.
Right.
And even some of the subs still, right? Like that might want to like get into that seven-thirty to three.
There are some parents who sub for us at UES in particular, who, who sub for us every day. I mean, that's what they do. And, and so this might give them more permanency in that position and the opportunity for healthcare. I know if you're, if you're in the gig economy, the opportunity for healthcare is probably pretty big. You're the, the chance of healthcare. So I think there is a small chance that we are competing with. I apply to different districts. We have permanent subs.
Looking for a career change.
I'm always looking for it.
So if they're not on the, if they're going to be subs and potentially look at becoming teachers and get licensure at some point or whatever, would that create, is there any way to think that they're not going to be in the contract, not going to be covered by the union, and they're just off their own to that? Kind of creates the, that created intention? Because they're not on contract and they're not covered by those, you know, union protections and all that stuff? Because they're just.
I don't think the two around future career goals.
Okay.
I don't think there's any conflict there.
Okay.
Or at least I can't see any. I can see only benefits there.
Okay.
Because they can use that experience as being hired by a school district and being in a school building every day as part of the review process for their experience, which is something that licensing takes into consideration.
Would the union think otherwise?
No, I've talked to the union about that and they're this and they're all for it.
Okay.
They're like, yep, go for it. Get as many as you can.
And, and the financial side of it? You're taking the current rate and giving the salary. But then, I think Mia mentioned that the health benefits and any other benefits are on top of it.
Yeah.
So that's, subs don't get any of that. So that's an additional thing that you would need to cover.
Right, right.
And that's not a small piece either, right?
It's not a small piece. No, you're right. And so I think that the finding the, that end amount that was quoted in your, in the recommendation that I gave the board, the one sixty some, that's, that would probably be what we actually average paying overall with the benefits packages on top. So if we hire somebody who is at, you know, doesn't have licensure and just want, you know, let's say a gig worker, right, who has no experience subbing for us but wants this, and wants the healthcare, then they're getting the low end of the pay with the benefits on top of it, right? So that, it's still within the range. I think it will all fall within the range. It may be more than that if we get lucky.
Yeah.
Is it one, one sixty, is the number you gave us, one sixty? Does that, so is it, is it one thirty already budgeted? And now we're talking about only thirty from the fund?
No, one thirty is budgeted for subs next year without any kind of permanent sub.
Okay. Oh, I see. So this is one sixty additional?
Potentially.
Okay.
Right, because we're likely going to spend more money than this one sixty on subs.
Right.
Because the permanent sub, and even if we got one for every school, wouldn't cover every sub response.
Right, yeah.
Wouldn't fill every substitute position.
Right.
At, at any given day.
Especially on a Friday.
Potentially that one thirty would go down because of, we get lucky and we get three sub, permanent subs. That one thirty would go down.
Yeah, we would, we would spend that faster than we typically do.
Yeah, yeah.
Spend that first and then we would start kicking into the fund balance.
Yeah, but you, you're not thinking it's going to be two ninety?
No.
It's going to be south of that because that one thirty will go down.
Right. Right, I think it will be south of the one sixty.
Okay.
Other questions?
What do you, what would you like, do, do you need a motion?
Yes.
Yeah, it's a significant amount of money, so the board would have to approve this.
Yeah, and you'd also, if we want to add ten days, you'd have to approve ten days. And my guess is, I would suggest we give Libby the option of offering, while the, offering it but not mandating it because I could see someone who's, who's got a gig saying, no, I'd rather take those ten days and, and work on my art.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I think I'm, sorry.
I would, I would just say let's have it be the expectation. You know, that this is what, we're, right here we're saying a guarantee of a hundred and seventy-eight days. We would just say a guarantee of a hundred and eighty-eight days. This is the work, this is, this is the work. You're a teacher in our building all year long, this, this is the work.
If you add it on days, I would take out two of them because two of them are parent conference days.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, my only thought is, is if it's a struggle to get, I would rather have substitute coverage that the school needs than knock out a couple of candidates and be in a situation like we are now. Because I'm, I'm not, I'm just not sure every person in the category that she said is interested, going to be interested in this is going to want to sit through trainings. They, they may or they may not, but if it's, if it's not a.
We can put a stipulation that should you wish to partake in, in service professional development days, you'll be paid for them.
Yeah.
It looks like Jill.
Jill.
Yeah, that, that might maybe feel better because I, I'd hate to defeat the purpose in part, which is to make sure that classrooms are covered so the teachers can take advantage of professional development. It sounds like that was one of the many reasons why we need substitutes. So I'd hate to defeat that purpose by requiring those same folks who are going to cover those classes to go to those trainings. But I love the philosophy and I like that idea of having it be an option.
Amanda.
But those PD days that are in there are not. It's just if I want to take some other PD opportunities, correct? Like not for the district's PD day?
Right, so what I understand you're asking for is for instance, the Martin Luther King Day, where we are working on, all the teachers are together, working on sort of justice and, and equity work and that kind of stuff. Yeah. That we would want ours, any employee to be there.
Yeah, so I, I think it's like based on, following Merrick said, it's like, it's kind of developing that culture of like, we're here together, especially like those specific trainings that have to do with some of the frameworks of the district around whether it's equity, reserve, justice, you know, students with disabilities, whether it's, it's all of this that if you're a subs, a sub, you know, you are having that same culture in your classroom for one day. Like you kind of know what those frameworks are, which is what you use kind of like in those PD days that are district-wide. So they have at least the framework for that, you know? So I, I don't think it should be an option. I think it should be part of those eight days.
But if you don't have these permanent subs and you're getting subs in who are just getting called randomly, so you don't have that anyways, right?
You have a permanent sub in each of the school buildings.
Yeah, but the way they're, the way they're doing subs right now, you don't have subs that are going to professional development training.
No, that's, that's true.
But we have a permanent person that's in the building doing random things, covering classrooms or things that they don't need. Yeah, so.
I hear the concern, Jim. I just wonder how much anybody who would be seeking a job, like how much they would actually, you know, if what we put in the job description or whatever is a hundred and eighty-six days, they probably are not listening to this debate we're having right now and going, oh, well, it could have been one seventy-eight, so now I'm not going to apply. I don't know, it just feels like, I, I, it doesn't seem like too much of a reason to, I, I don't want to be like, I'm, I'm not worried about it. It is a, it is a job seeker's market right now. That is true. And it's kind of like somebody who, somebody who's attracted to this position in the first place is somebody who's interested in working in a school. And we're just simply saying as the employer in this district, this is what the expectation is for working in our schools. And I'm all in favor of employee, employers setting the expectation that we should set, so.
I, I don't know. My, my thought is that.
Oh, sorry, Zach.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, Zach.
No, it's fine. Um, yeah, I would just sort of affirm like what Mia and Amanda have been saying, as well a lot of other people have mentioned. Like I know from a lot of personal experience, like with substitute teachers, that there are certain issues that they're not trained on or just certain like norms that they're not aware of. And that can be really uncomfortable as, like as a student. And I'm sure they could learn that within time within being in the building, but I think it would be a lot more comfortable for students if that was already a baseline. And if it's like eight extra days, it don't. I'm not, I'm not a, like a job market expert, but I think that, I think that if they're already wanting to be in the building, I don't think like eight days is going to be a lot more stress or setback.
I, I hear, I hear everyone, I just really wanted to get to the point that getting substitutes is really hard. It's a big problem. It's, it's a hurdle. This is a job that has a, I think, a slim demographic that's going to be interested. And a lot of those people are going to have flexibility. And even in your own job, ten extra days off can make a difference. If, if this is, if this is a, do I do this or do I not do this thing?
I'm kind of confused about, I'm kind of confused about how this would work if it's a permanent position, it's a salaried position? Or it's not an hourly position, right?
No, so it would be salary.
If it's a salaried position, if you would have a salary, in the case of forty thousand dollars, it's a two hundred and twenty-five dollars per day calculation with one seventy-eight. And now certainly if you're saying, oh, you can come a hundred and eighty-eight days, but we will pay you forty-two thousand dollars for those, you know, you know, two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars extra. So forty-two, two fifty, we'll pay. But you don't have to come. I don't, I'm, I'm confused about that, if we're giving them the option.
Well, no, I think what, what I'm saying is I, I would rather it not be an option. That's, that's my point.
So, so now we'll offer say forty-two thousand dollars and say that you have to show up for these hundred and eighty-eight days?
Right, but Libby's saying one eighty-six because two hundred and.
One eighty-six, I mean, the calculation would change slightly, but, but that's, the point is that we are now, we'll say that, hey, we'll pay you more, but we need those eight, six days more, eight days more from you.
That, that's what I, that's, that's what I'm advocating for.
Okay, okay. So the, the option, the optional piece is how I was confused about is how would we say that we'll pay you more but, and you don't have to show up for these if you don't want to?
No, so how it would work is they'd fill out a time sheet. So yes, it's salaried, like we're guaranteeing that much amount of money. However, you have to, like with any kind of MOU like this, you'd have to track their days.
Yeah.
Right, and so.
But it's not going to be the optional, we can't say that, oh, for some people.
No, if we were to make it, if we were to make it one hundred and eighty-four days, let's say, and they had ten. say, and they had ten sick days, um, and two personal days, I'm just throwing numbers out, I'm spitballing right now, then, and they didn't want to come to Martin Luther King Junior in-service, um, then they would have to take a sick day or a personal, they would have to use their leave time not to come to that day.
Yeah, that's what I was getting, yeah. That's what I was getting, it doesn't become the...
Yeah, and what I'm suggesting is that you give them the option of attending those days, but then add it as like a per diem on, on top of, so they get paid for the one seventy-six, and if they want to do an extra days, they could get paid.
On top of it, yeah.
Per diem for that. And, and by reasoning is, is, I mean, I agree with everything everyone has said, I just feel that this is a real need, and when you make the hurdle higher, you make the hurdle higher.
I, I will make my last objection to that is like that, it's when it comes to culture building, and I tell you the experience of working with schools where there is a different tiers of people saying, well, I'm not going to get paid. And we had this conversation with some of, when I was part of the district equity committee, and I was supporting and helping build the, the in-service day. It was like, there was like that, that people were feeling like they were not included because they were not going to get paid, and there, there was no turnaround, right? Like, and so like, there was not for, for the IAs. So that's changing, but then like, you want to include, like if they're permanent for a year, then you want to make them part of the culture. So that's, I think that it is important to give more like, yeah, you're part of this, even if you're not licensed.
Well, if you're, and every, you know, and now and then substitute now, you're taking a permanent sub position, I don't, that seems an awful lot, making someone part of the culture in itself, as opposed to, these things are available and you, and they're haphazard, this is guaranteed time. Personally, I am, I don't, I, I like the idea of giving people choices, not deciding for them what's best, even though I understand, in the long run, it may be the best thing for the, for the district, it also feels like telling people what's best for them. I like the idea of the choice, but...
Yeah?
I think it is a big thing to have somebody who's a permanent staff person be, I don't know, integrated into the culture. And so it feels like the best, one of the way, one of the best ways to support them is to have them be, participate in something like a professional development day and the, you know, the, the rah-rah day where they get to have breakfast with everybody and, and those kinds of things. And to me, it doesn't come down, it's not so much a like, well, we know what's best for you, but more just like, we as a, as a district are acknowledging things that we've heard from students and from other teachers and things about how big of a deal this is, the culture and the, the being able to wrap around stu, every single student with the support that they need around social, emotional, um, and behavioral learning, and that because of that, we're setting this expectation for anybody who's going to be a full-time staff member in our district, because we want, not only do we, and we'll provide you that support. The, it's an expectation and it's a support to be part of, um, these professional development days.
I'll just make one final point. Teachers right now are stressed because they don't have subs. They're covering, it's hard, it's hard on teachers, it's hard on principals, it's hard on administrators. I think anything we do to make it harder to bring subs into the building is not supporting our teachers. Even if we can make a good argument, which I think people have, that there's cultural reasons to do it, I think we should make it as easy as possible to hire subs next year. And that's why I think making it as flexible an option as we can makes sense. But if the board disagrees, the board disagrees.
Libby, I don't want to freak on the spot, but I'm genuinely curious. Like I feel like a lot of people would see that as a plus, right? Because that's something they could put on their resumes if they participate in these things. I'm wondering if that, that's actually like a, if we did consider that, if that would actually be a draw for some people.
If I had my druthers, I'd make it optional. I'd say you will be paid for in-service trainings that you attend.
And maybe all of them would, we don't know.
Yeah. And I would say we should exclude anyone. I think we should just make it flexible so we have a higher pool, so we can fill a very pressing need to support our teachers and administrators, but, um...
So the phrase a guarantee of one seventy-eight doesn't say a maximum, it says a minimum, basically?
Exactly.
Okay.
Well, and that's not the MOU that was just written for the board. That's not the actual MOU.
It's very official.
It's quite official. I try.
That's very helpful. And, and, and I've said this before, I, when I was at the Agency of Education, I did get to see a few schools that had a full-time sub and they were, they were the clutch. Everyone knew them, they knew the kids, they knew the staff, they kind of knew the style of the different teachers. So I think this is a fantastic model to, to try, and I, I'm hoping a place like Montpelier Roxbury will draw some really great people because it's kind of a neat idea, you know, if you're, if you're out of school and still trying to figure out where you want to go, or what, what subject you want to teach, or what age, this is another great opportunity. So I, I think offering it as an option is great because I think the vast majority, if not everyone, would probably take advantage of it, especially if they're going to get paid to go.
Can we put a language in there that, um, you know, this is what it is, and we highly, um, recommend that, or something, encourage you to, to, um, attend the in-service days and all that, and you'll get paid per diem for those, something like that. So it's, yeah, your base salary is this, and you can make more, a little bit more, and we encourage you to do that to, to attend that.
We can certainly do that.
I have a practical question. So you have a sub in a classroom that is having some conflicts. How are they, and this is a permanent sub that knows the kids, knows the classroom, like how are they being trained, um, around some of all these overarching goals and that the district has?
Um, that's not a simple question to answer, because we don't have them currently. I also think that putting a whole lot of stock in one day of professional development, or even six days of professional development, which will not be all the same, they will be on different topics, is putting way too much stock in those. So, um, so that's, uh, that's something. If a sub, if we were to hire permanent subs and they were having trouble in the classroom, most likely the trouble would be around classroom management. And the assistant principal and the principal would be working with them to help them with routines and coach them through it, or the instructional coaches that we now have coming on board would be working with them around routines. The, the PLC, the professional learning communities, the first grade team would wrap their arms around the person to help with classroom management. Um, and we coached them through that. And going back to what I believe Brett said, or Sagey, one of the two, um, we'd probably be pretty particular as to which classrooms that sub would go into if they were really struggling with things like classroom management. But I do want to state that, like, going to one day of in-service on restorative justice or something is not going to...
No.
...ingratiate them into the, like, that, that takes lots of time over a course of years.
I'm a little on the fence on this. I, I, on one side, I feel like I, if I was in charge, I would force everybody to go there and, and put them in their room. Um, but then I started thinking about my own job, and there's plenty of meetings I wish I could just skip. And if you're not going to be a willing participant and go there and engage and actually be present, then why not just leave and, and have that option? You know, not everyone's going to really get things from these in-services. I would like to think that they would, but some people might just check out, some people might just go there just to punch their card. Um, and the people that choose and opt in to go there are going to be the ones that are going to perhaps float to the top and be the better employees and be more engaging. And the ones that don't, not that it's a, a mark against them, but that's just, that's their attitude. They don't want to, they don't want to go there. And then why, you know, they're adults, you know, why force them to go there? And especially if it's going to be a hindrance to, to hiring a, a good sub, um, which is the most important thing in this part, process, right?
I'm also looking at that idea of that extra support that people are getting as a permanent stuff, sub that they, if they were, if they were a current status quo sub today, sub today.
A day-to-day.
As a permanent sub, that is a lot of support and a lot of, a lot of opportunity to grow and whatever. And it is a pilot, and maybe we ask if we can get them, or we ask all the subs what they think about this idea at the end of the pilot year or something like that, and reconsider what it looks like, um, if it becomes something that's folded into the budget, say, and not just a memorandum of understanding.
That's a good question. If, if this is successful...
Then this could theoretically become part of a future contract or budget cycle or, knowing that it's hard to predict. But if this is a successful model, and we find people to do it, these are a lot of ifs, then this could be part of how the district operates, that this is like a, a regular setup. I think that's the other part that's just making me, I want to make sure we're not creating a separate system that might have any more inequities than it already does to the contract, because like, maybe at some point, if it has more benefit than someone who's under contract, I don't want to lose somebody and have them take this. I don't know if that would happen, but...
No, we talked about that. We, um, our instructional assistants in particular, right? So, um, but we were, we did that math in the last negotiating cycle with the instructional assistants, because in that cycle, we added language around substitution, um, and so they get additional money on top of their typical paycheck if they are asked to cover a class, if instructional assistant, so it doesn't work out even, you know what I mean? Like this is not going to, um, it could draw an instructional assistant who may not want to be an instructional assistant anymore. I'm not saying that, but what I'm saying is it's not monetarily better or worse than being an instructional assistant.
Yeah?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Uh, to approve Libby's recommendation for the, um, permanent substitutes and, um, change the, um, language around days of work to be a guarantee of one hundred eighty-six days of paid work, um, with the expectation that they attend in-service.
I second that motion.
Discussion?
Do we have a sense of the financial difference?
Yeah, I could figure it out already, I watched him.
It, it's going to be, the high would be around ten five million.
Okay.
And, and then sixty-nine.
I would make the recommendation that it may not be one hundred and eighty-six days, but that it would be less than that, because some of those days are working with, you know, special educators, working with classrooms, like, some of the in-service days are not professional development.
I gotcha.
It's very specific teacher collaboration about very specific children.
Gotcha.
That this position would not be a part of the discussion. So if you think about in-service days, it's probably, um, you know, you could think about it from an IA perspective. They have three additional days now.
Now that we've...
Yeah, after tonight, they have three addition, they're four additional days to their contract. And so maybe it's one hundred eighty-two days instead. So that takes out the parent conferences, it takes out the, you know, Jim and I talking about very specific kids, it, you know, it takes out those days. But there is still days of, um, opportunity there. In addition, I think the most thing that, that the board members who have spoken so far in favor of adding on days are mostly concerned with equity, restorative justice practices, those kind of things. Those, that professional development, with the exception of MLK Day, that is the one day that we have promised to focus on that.
Mm-hmm.
In addition to the half-days. So if somebody is a substitute in our school district for a, and we're paying them for a day, then they are staying for that full day. So that's, that eliminates, like that's not an in-service day.
True.
That is a full day of work for teachers and substitutes. So I, I would, um, recommend that it's not that full-time, because it's putting way too much onus as to exactly what hap, I mean, there's some of that time during in-service that teachers are putting their rooms together.
Sure.
You know, that's not a, they don't, permanent subs don't need to do, be there for that. You don't need to pay them for that.
So you're saying the adjustment would be one eighty-two?
One eighty, one eighty-two.
One eighty, yeah. So I'm, I'm good with amending it so that it's not actually a number, to give you the flexibility of meeting what you just described, and simply saying a guarantee of one hundred eighty, seventy-eight days of paid work, including the expectation that they intend, attend in-service. It, the professional development days.
Professional development, yeah.
Yeah. So what we're really talking about here is a difference of maybe two or four days.
Four at the most.
Four. So it's one eighty-two instead of one seventy-eight, which, sorry, Merrick, I see her hand, I just want to point out, is also reducing potentially the height of the hurdle that Jim is concerned about.
Wait, so when you say expectation, you do mean like why, right?
Yes, yes. My motion is that it is not optional.
Okay.
I second that.
Further discussion?
One more question. Um, so if we approve this right now, as is, it's required to do the in-service, and the perfect candidate comes along and applies interviews and has a really compelling reason to not attend the in-service, is there any wiggle room there as far as negotiations, or is it just completely off?
Not with the current motion, no.
Well, her motion, my answer would be you'd have to take your sick time or personal time.
Right. Which, any teacher, that's the case for any teacher, if they, right? Yeah. Which they have ten days of in this, according to this MOU.
Yeah.
I move that Mia's motion be amended to make all of the in-service time be at the choice of the candidate, if that's such a motion. Is that a motion?
Amended, amended, amendment to a motion?
This is purely for show. I appreciate the honesty too.
Your own motion?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think you can only amend your own motion.
Yeah.
So you would make a secondary motion, I believe. You'd make a separate motion.
Yes.
Can there be two motions on the table?
There can be two motions and we vote on one, the vote on the other.
But can you just vote on one and then?
I guess if there are two motions, there'll be...
So, so Brett, say more. It is, I mean, regardless of what I just said, it is optional for them to attend in that, as Sagey just pointed out, they could say, I'm sorry, I am incredibly busy on Martin Luther King Junior holiday, I'm taking a leave. I'm taking one of my paid days.
Yeah. I mean, they could also get COVID and, you know, two weeks and not have the option anymore. You know, I don't know. I don't know. I mean, it's a tough one. I don't know.
So what, the motion you proposed, that was not saying a set amount of days, that was giving Libby the, like, basically authority to say which days, right?
Yeah, I took the number out because I wanted to make sure, because Libby made the excellent point, that they don't need to be there for teacher conferences, they don't need to be there to set up their classrooms. So it's, it's, we know that it's one hundred seventy-eight days, because that's the days that the students are in school. And then plus the expectation of whatever the days that are, that are district-wide professional development days.
My, my second question is, do we know what other schools are doing, or with their permanent subs, do they have to go to the instructions or?
I don't know what everybody's doing. I reached out to Julie Regenbold, who's up at Mississippi Valley, and they're just making it student days.
They're doing what?
Student days.
So they are required there or?
For student days only, so one seventy-eight, or whatever their student day number is. But I didn't reach out to everybody.
Is it possible to make a second motion so that there becomes, how does this work?
You can, you can announce your intent to make a second motion, then we take a vote, and then we'll know your motion is coming if, if the first vote doesn't pass. So...
Yeah, I'm kind of, I'm sorry, we're still discussing, I'm, I'm kind of leaning towards giving the option. Um, it just feels like it's, we, we will, not only they will have option, but we will have more options and more flexibility than just locking it and saying that they will do that, so, I don't know.
I just feel like it could be up to whoever's doing the hiring to communicate how it's going to go and then decide... going to go and then decide on it, I guess. I don't know. Instead of sort of, we don't even know, we don't even have a number of days or necess, or the, we're sort of, concept of professional development doesn't have any clear number of days, especially for this role. We're not sure exactly how they're all going to play out next year. They didn't all play out this year the way they had been planned last year. And so it's, I don't know, it feels.
And to me, there are a lot of unknowns that we, it just feels like the more unknowns we have, the more flexibility we need to have.
Can we split, can I, can I, can we just split it? One, one motion to like approve the two, four permanent positions in each of the buildings and then another motion to approve the MIA part of adding this professional development days and then you just vote yes or no, and that's it, instead of like putting it all together? Is that like for me, like I will, I really feel strongly that they should take those PD days, especially MLK Day and all those like framework PD days. So like, I don't want to have to vote no on the whole thing. But I feel strongly about that. So like, if you guys don't, that's okay. But I want to be able to have the option to approve the four permanent positions and then have the option to say, no, I think the cultural like thing for every staff member should be talking about microgressions, including permanent subs that are going to be here. Every, you know, including a boss person, like, that's just part of the work that we need to do. So.
So, so we can do that. Mia would have to pull her initial motion and then offer, and then someone else would have to offer that motion and then we could do two motions or?
I think another way to handle it would be to just vote on this one. If it doesn't pass, then we make another motion that is probably included.
The question for Amanda though is would you vote, would you vote, well, I guess you could be on record voting for one and then not for the other.
I would vote for Mia's motion right now as is, yes.
To be clear though, the board doesn't decide what we do on those days.
Except.
Oh, correct. Yes.
So I hear very clearly. An expectation of what those days will be, and they may not be that, that focus. So, so, and I, and again, I want to reiterate that two days of professional learning or three days or four days does not change behavior. Right? So.
No, I totally agree with you, Libby. It is also though, like not doing, it feels like not setting that expect, there's more about it. It feels to me about like we are setting an expectation that this is what it is to be a full-time teacher in our buildings. But you're absolutely right, that, you know, being, being at a training doesn't, does not, the change made. The workshop, the work is not the workshop, as one of my favorite trainers.
And while these people will be full-time in the building, the purpose is for them to play the role of substitutes for full-time teachers right now who are absolutely out of their minds because of the lack of substitutes and need that support. So getting them that support to our full-time teachers, to me, is the priority. And making that as easy as possible is the priority. And that's how we support our teachers. And sometimes it's not perfect.
I think the point that you and I disagree on, Jim, is that, is the hurdle. You see it as a bigger hurdle than I do to say this is a requirement of the job. So I think, I am not, I'm not disagreeing that we need to support our teachers and that we need this. I think this detail here of what, of what, of the size of the hurdle is where we disagree.
Yeah. No, and I, I agree though, but I think, I don't know. Anyhow, should we vote on Mia's, Mia's motion?
Right. So Rhett didn't formally make a motion, correct?
Well, let's.
He was founded, he was founded, it wasn't seconded.
So what do we have to do? Can we have two motions on the table?
So theoretically, you made a second amendment, right? Or though you didn't formally to go from the 186 to the 182?
Yes.
Okay.
And there was no 182, right? The days were pulled out.
I have, thank you, thank you for the clarification. I have removed the number of days, other than the 178 that's in Libby's recommendation.
Okay.
But then.
But I have, yes, amended my motion.
But then if you, I'm sorry, if you pulled the days, the, the, the motion would be to give Libby the authority to figure out how many days, as long as the professional development days are included. Is that, okay.
Do you want to just?
If you have a definition of professional development, it is okay.
Do you want to restate a fresh motion?
I'd love to. I'd love to. I move to approve Libby's recommendation for hiring permanent substitutes with the addition of setting an expectation of attending district-wide professional development days.
I second that one.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So how many, what is that?
I think we're tied.
All the ayes.
Three, three, three.
Three, three. You're a half, well.
There's nothing in Jill's book that says you can be a half.
I, I haven't read Jill's book, but I'm pretty certain of that.
I can leave one, but you guys are.
So the motion does not pass?
Yeah.
Well, right, or was it three, four?
It does, because it's three against two and a half, I guess.
Yeah. Well, and I, I can vote to break a tie, which I'm.
But it's not a tie.
I think I can vote. Can I?
I don't, I don't believe you can be a half vote.
So it's two against three.
If everyone's worth two votes and I'm worth one vote.
I don't know, that's where you're kidding. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So it's just a lot of votes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's not a half vote.
I'm sorry, I'm proud of that.
Per the agreement, per the merger.
Yeah.
I'd forgotten about that, Rhett, thank you.
Five against six.
You are a whole person, you are a whole person to me.
I know.
So the question is, can I vote?
Yeah.
I think I can vote if it's decisive.
Why?
Because I'm an elected member of the board.
Yeah.
And the chair usually doesn't vote unless the vote's needed to make it decisive. I will vote no.
Okay.
We can double check that, but.
So the motion does not pass. So then we would need another motion.
I will make another motion. I will make a motion, two motions. One is to approve the four permanent positions.
Well, you have to make one at a time.
Just one at a time.
Okay, so I'm making two motions, one at a time. The first motion is that we approve four permanent subpositions, one for each school district.
For each school building.
For each school building, sorry. School, um, yeah, that's one.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, so that motion passes. So the recommendation passes.
Not a recommendation, a motion.
Right. To accept the recommendation.
My motion to include four permanent subs, one on each school district. My second motion I'm making is that we add professional development, district-wide professional development days to the permanent sub MOUs. Three days, Libby, what you said?
I was just counting in my head. Sorry. Let me pull up the calendar. Because I don't want to get it wrong. Okay, so next year, next school year, then there's one district day in August. There's an in-service day in October, but that is def, that is typically a building-based day. There's a parent conference in, in October. Martin Luther King Day is a district-wide day. There's parent conferences in March. And then the early releases are district-wide. So any early releases not.
Covered under this.
Those are. It's not considered an in-service day. It's a, it's just a full day of work. So that equals, if I'm, as I'm looking at the calendar very quickly, it equals two days. It equals two days of district-wide, district-wide work and three days of building-based work. Building-based work typically has teachers working in teams in their PLC on the school improvement plan around student academic data or social emotional learning data. But that's not a promise. I don't make those days. That's the principal's discretion.
That whole thing is about two days.
Did we have a second to the motion?
So the board feels a little bit better about that, only two days, is that there are, we added several more early releases next year. We added like three more early releases next year to have more time to work in, as a district faculty.
Yeah, I still feel really the option to, having the option for Libby or the administration to say, hey, we really encourage you to come for this and whatever, and then we'll get paid. Even though I know it's two days, it's at the beginning, people are going to see that $42,000 and then go from there.
I, I would hate for us to preclude them from participating and I'm worried if we don't address that, we've actually removed that. I would see it as a perk that they would get to participate in these as paid days. And I don't want to preclude that from happening if these substitutes do want to participate. So I'm worried that if we don't address that, we've actually.
So I thought that was the thing, that if they do participate, they get more money on top of the, the salary.
Is that assumed or?
Yeah.
I think, I, I thought that was, maybe I was.
Yeah, it's the idea that would get paid for that time.
That would be the, the pitch to whoever is, candidate is applying, that, hey, this is the 40, $40,000, $42,000 a salary. And, you know, we have in-service days that, that you can attend and we'll pay you for those.
I think we'd even encourage them, say, we'd love to have you.
Oh, yeah.
We'd love to have you come. But, you know, if you want to take those days off, it won't count against your leave and you won't get paid for it.
But that also gives the principals or the administration the, the flexibility that, oh, we'd like, even though we had said that the two service days, we would like you to attend this third one because it's really going to be benefiting all of us. So, and you're going to get paid for that.
So those, those will be eight, right? If they were.
Yeah, that could be, you know, in, in administrations purview of offering whatever extra days that they want to offer. So we don't lock them into just two days or one day.
Did we have a second to Amanda's second motion? I'll second it.
Any discussion? It's basically we had the same thing Mia presented, but in two parts.
Could you restate it one more time? I'm sorry.
Make a motion to add professional days, require professional day, professional development days for the permanent subpositions.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
So who, who are the ayes and the nays?
I think it's three, two.
I only heard two, two voices of the.
Yes, two and then three without Jim, is what names, what I think.
And I looked it up. I, I can, the chair, in Board Number 12, the chair can vote always.
I'd like to make a motion to make sure that we offer and encourage, but make it voluntary for permanent substitutes to attend all professional development opportunities.
And pay them for it.
And pay.
Is that what, would you include that in your motion? I'm asking, I was asking the question.
Yeah, yeah. If I, if I come in, you know, if I'm going to come in, I should get paid.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, the same way as everyone else. But maybe if, I feel really crappy and I don't want to. I don't know. I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Is Anna the one keeping track of things? Thank you, Anna.
That's awesome, Jill. No, she's got a thumbs up, Mammy. She's got a thumbs up. She's good to go.
Thanks, Anna.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How many ayes were there?
I think all.
Everyone, yeah. Ayes, haven't. Wow, it's the most contentious vote I've ever had in seven years on the board.
Good discussion.
It was good discussion.
Good discussion.
Yeah, definitely good discussion. Good result. Now, and thanks for, we, those days would not have even come up as an option if, if it wasn't brought up. So, so thank you for that.
Cross our fingers that we find people now.
So we are on to board discussion, Facilities Committee. I don't know who from the Facilities Committee wants to give an update.
I missed the last one, just as I missed the last board meeting. And Kristen is our very capable chair who does our minutes and things like that. So I don't have any updates.
Do we want to reschedule for when Kristen can make it? Why don't we do that?
Yeah, and there were meeting minutes too. So there's a little, the, the building tours have continued. I think there's maybe one more.
Yeah, MSMS is in two weeks.
Thank you. Oh, and Ms. is very.
I might be able to go.
That'd be great to hear where things are with the net zero study too. Or at least thinking about getting, getting that going. Okay, so we can, we'll reschedule that soon. And then retreat planning with the draft agenda. I've heard from a couple of you, Amanda can love her more, but she had some great suggestions about maybe kind of doing the brainstorming around committees, just, and having some report out from the committees about their work plans and how the work, and, you know, discussing how the work plans merge. Also, Amanda talked about, you know, what horizon do we want to look out on? She suggested a two-year horizon, or at least a two-year far lookout, maybe a year lookout with a little more specifics, just to give more direction than also, you know, when the board turns over, there's, there's a bit of a game plan already, both of which I thought made sense. Mia had a question about ground rules and parameters and talking about that tonight, which I think we could. I was just kind of thinking of, you know, something like the, you know, the like respect to ground rules, you know, to take responsibility for what you say, don't blame others, use empathetic listening, be sensitive to differences in communication styles. You make sure you ponder what you hear and feel before you speak. Examine your assumptions and perceptions, keep confidentiality, which we can't do because it's a public meeting. And obviously, you know, trust greater truth, comes with diverse perspectives. And then some others that I think are good ones, you know, come prepared, be present, start positively, follow the agenda, create a collusive environment, make space and take space, be solution focused, you know, assume positive or good intent. And, yeah, we would love other suggestions about things, but, you know, just kind of agreeing on, which I think we'd kind of try to do anyways. And then I think Libby had some suggestions about some kind of protocols we can use to, you know, like sticky boards and whatnot to, you know, organize, you know, the brainstorms. So it's, it's done in a way where we kind of, you know, go into small groups, you know, probably by committee, come back, you know, put our stickies on a board and then, you know, discuss priorities. You know, and then other things to think about, obviously, we've got some things that are going to kind of, you know, come into the stream at different times. You know, the visioning process is going to come in in August. So we can, you know, sketch out a plan in June and then kind of, you know, see how that looks in the overlay of what comes out of the visioning committee. Hopefully, we'll have a good sample of our climate survey responses that we can also, you know, integrate into that discussion on the retreat to see what themes are coming up from, you know, the faculty and staff and employees at the schools. And then, you know, every time you make a plan, things. And then, you know, every time you make a plan, things pop up as we know, especially as we've known for the last couple of years, so, you know, those things as well. Yeah, so we'd just love thoughts on my little kind of dump of what I've heard and, you know, additional thoughts. And, you know, kind of comments on Libby's agenda. And then in terms of, I asked for some process examples. And Mia came up with two good ones, one which I'd already thought of, which was, you know, the process around the tract. And the other one, remind me of, was the-
The creation and rollout of the policy ritual.
Yes. Yeah, so I'll just open it up for, for thoughts and comments on the agenda and, and we can also, you know, kind of continue to do this on by email and send out a revised agenda, but, you know, this is probably the last level we'd be together as a, as a group. Amanda?
Can I ask first, just from my own knowledge, how many board members were here for the equity policy? Just because of the way the protocol I've designed, not the equity policy, the equity, the tool, the rubric, just because the policy or the way, the format I'm thinking about right now, you need a history.
Yeah.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You need experience with it, so I'm just curious if there were board members who were not here for that.
I think maybe Sagey.
Just Sagey? Okay.
Maybe we can give you some background or some more, yeah. Amanda?
So I'm like thinking like timeline, like walking backwards from like when budget passes, like all those little things that to envision like, I'm like a vision. I'm like, I need things in writing, so like, being a timeline, like, okay, we're right now in, in Ju-, we usually have the retreat this month, what happens then, and like, kind of ba-, you know, election time and board membership, like, what are the things that we need in terms of like, the board pocket that the equity committee is built in right now and like, what the students are bringing, so. Like being able to kind of have that as like, okay, this is what happens. And here's like the two years, and then being able to do some of that work around like the committees and like the work plan of like, what, what it will look like. And I think for, for Libby's activity, it's like a really important to have some grounding questions that we can come prepare for beforehand, so not just together, but like that we actually do our homework before, like our thinking and come prepare to like actually get it done. So it's like those four hours to like make it really rich about work that the committees are already doing. And like we have the climate survey, like to inform some of that and some like summaries of the vision committee and what's happening, and just like, so that we're there with things that tangible that we're doing.
I would point out that you have four hours.
Yep.
And you've named about eight to twelve hours of work, so, so I think that the board should prioritize. What, what did you wanna talk about?
Wait, Amanda, I have a clarifying question. When we were just talking about that timeline, this, this, we're doing this. Were you saying it would be helpful to have that written down as a grounding, like, we'd have it to look at as a, as a piece of information for the discussions that we have?
Exactly.
So that we know, I, so if I'm following your line of thinking, if we know, hey, there's all this work that happens to make the budget happen, we shouldn't really plan to do a whole lot of other work as a board. Maybe committees could, but during that two-month period or whatever. Okay. So, so seeing that as a visual to help inform our conversations?
Yeah, I just, I, and like, a lot of what we did in the last retreat, it was like kind of just left there, right? Like last year, we did that retreat and then, it's like, I don't want that to happen again, so it's like time to like come prepare and be able to have some tangible. I think we have a great opportunity because we are all in different committees that touching all of that. Like, we're already doing the work. I mean, I'm in the policy committee and the equity committee and like, like we meet a lot. We're doing a lot of work, so I want everybody to know what we're working. And I also want to make sure that we're getting all of us on the same page about what that work could look like in the next year or two, right? Like, so I think, I think it's really important. I, I just, I get anxious when we don't have tangible things at the end of four hours of work. And then we also have the two hours in June fifteen, so it's really six hours.
Yeah, to synthesize.
To synthesize and to get there.
I'll be quick. I really like the idea of taking the time to go through our processes. I think that's really important. I'm glad that's in here. And forgive me, I, were we not going to get any update on the Visioning Committee, or did we decide that's too much and it wouldn't be, it'd be premature?
Well, maybe that's August.
Okay.
All right.
Well, the warning says Wednesday, June thirteenth. It's Monday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it possible for the committees to put to, to, it, the, each committee may have an idea of what their sort of plan might look like for the year, or is it possible for, I mean, I know Mia's done an awesome job with the superintendent evaluation committee, kind of adjusting that plan, and I don't want to ask something that's not doable between now and the thirteenth. But is it possible to have time for each committee to say what their goals are and the, the sort of frames, just to take time for that? And then, maybe we really, take a really defined time for each committee and then greater board or something, like somehow to limit it so that there's a way to acknowledge some of the work and some of the changes and some of the adjustments without spending a lot of time debating what they should, that should look like? And I don't know how we would offer feedback to those processes if we really defined that time, but maybe a way. Because I'm really interested in, I wanna know how each committee is gonna improve their work and what they're doing. I think everybody's trying to, but I really am interested in as much time as a whole group with this sort of building, the culture building part that I hope that I heard was part of the last one, maybe it's, hopefully it will be part of this one, I don't know.
Mia?
Yeah, I, I am in agreement on the, the gen-, basic idea. I wanna make sure that we're using language that we all understand to be the same thing, because I think there's, there is a big difference between coming with some goals or ideas of goals and coming with a plan. And in fact, let's set, let's set some goals before we make the plan, so I wouldn't wanna expect any committee to come to the retreat with a plan yet because we don't know what the goals are. So, I, I, so I just wanna make sure that we're just saying, like, using the same language and sort of like the, being on the same page. And I think that it's, it's both ambitious and pretty realistic for us to expect that we could leave Monday with a set, with the, with the board having named a set of goals, but maybe not yet have a plan exactly for them, but then maybe that's what happened on Wednesday. Or maybe that's something that we say, okay, that's something we're gonna delegate to somebody to draft up and bring back to a, a future board meeting so we can land a plan at a future date. So anyway, I just wanna make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
Yeah, no, it's super helpful, and I think like goals, priorities, or the idea that we can maybe start to think about a plan, but we're certainly not gonna put together a plan.
I think for the sake of expediency, maybe it'd be like a, like a committee comment, like a public comment. If the committee's gonna speak, we're not meant to engage in discussion, but we're gonna hear, write notes, and circle out some. But that would make sure we don't get stuck down a rabbit hole or two in the weeds and sort of talk with a certain committee.
And may, and maybe to make it even more specific, we could ask, say, each committee's, the, our, our task between now and then is, as a committee, come up with that sort of vision, like what's our pie in the sky of what the district could achieve at the end of, we're saying two years out. And that's what the committee, maybe we would give some kind of context, like here's what we've been working on, et cetera, but really, this is our, almost like our proposal to the board, just to get it, to keep us kind of focused, and that would give us the, the, the fodder or the ideas with, with which to work, to come up with what the actual, the goals then are of, for the, for the district, for the, for the board, the full board.
Jill?
I was, I was gonna say, I, I, I like that, because I don't want to spend the whole retreat going through the, you know, committee accomplishments or, you know, that, that doesn't seem like a good use of our short time. And also to echo Amanda's point about doing work ahead of time, like, I'm guilty of it as anybody to show, show up at a major meeting like this, where we're supposed to come up with these things, having done very little, like, thinking about it. So I think we should maybe agree that we're at least on our own. We near, we're gonna come to the meeting with our ideas of some of the processes we went through and our ideas of possible priorities and goals, and then the committees are the means to the end, right? They're a method for achieving our priorities and goals and, yeah.
And they contribute to them with the ideas that come from the committees. It's like a-
Right, that's true.
Yeah, works together that way. I have a different question, but maybe we're still on.
Amanda?
I'm just, I'm thinking of the policy committee, like, in terms of goals versus work plan, you know, like just like thinking, you know, we, we have, like here are some of the policies we're working on the next year, like, so it's that, like, would that be a different conversation?
This is just my opinion, but I think there is work that committees do that aren't, that are not like completely in line with maybe a, a goal that we would set as a board. So, and my example for that with the equity committee would be maybe the, the new board member packet. I don't think we have to have it be a board goal, that by the end of twenty twenty-four, there is a board member, new board member packet, or twenty twenty-three or whatever, but the equity committee could still work on that.
Yeah.
And I don't know, did that answer, that's just my opinion, and I don't know if I even answered your question.
We'll talk about it in the retreat. Well, I just, I, I think there's like separate committees will have different ideas of what, like the infrastructure committees have like a different role, right? Like that they're looking at it specifically in terms of what the vision committee is like, different, so it, yeah. So I think like we just need to design and like be able to think about, like, just like, okay, how cohesive each of the committees become the board, right? Like, I think some of it is the challenge of committees doing their own thing and then, like us coming to a board meeting and be like, okay, we're voting on that particular thing. So instead of like being like, we understand what each committee is doing in a way. We understand the processes that happen with the financial committee and like, what happens the, when we don't look at all.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think reporting out is not a good use of time. I think one thing that I think is important is getting kind of like a shared sense of where like, you know, the three, you know, I'm just gonna use three because it's a common number. You have three goals and priorities the board wants to set over like a two-year horizon. And then a sense of, you know, do the committees have goals and priorities or they just do, because, you know, the more we can kind of get the committees' work to align with those bigger goals, so it's all pointing in the right direction. With the idea that there's gonna be some work that might either just need to get done or, you know, be aligned with those goals, but not in the, you know, sexiest of ways. You know, like the board member packet, I think, could align with certain goals, also something that needs to get done, but, you know, it could just align with the idea of, it, it could be kind of a broader equity thing of, you know, making sure that board members are, are onboarded properly and, and that we've got, you know, information accessible in, in one place, et cetera. So I wonder if, if maybe one thing we do is have the committees just be prepared to kind of share what, not their work plan or what they've been doing, but kind of why they're doing it, like what they're working towards. You know, what is their work trying to achieve without spending fifteen minutes talking about what that work is?
Yeah.
And just have like three to five minutes per committee?
And do we have a rain session of, like, ideas for those committees, just like to put out there, like?
I wonder if we kind of do that, so like we get a sense of where the committees think they're going, and then we kind of break some, where the board should be going, and then we kind of sit back and we say, okay, or where the committees think they're going, where the board thinks the board should be going, and, and, you know, where do those align and where do those not align, and do we have, do we have a shared sense of goals and are the committees working on things that, that align with those goals? Am I going down a rabbit head of a pole?
I think you have, in my mind, you have it backwards. The board should be creating the priorities and goals, and the committees should be working towards those.
No, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
I'm saying, but let's, but let's get a sense of where the committees think they're going, and then it gets a sense of where the board thinks they're going. And then, then let's see if it all makes sense. And so the committees can start thinking about like, oh, we're, we're going out this way, we should be going that way.
So my question would be-
I think I've lost my-
Is it? I think you, I think the board still needs to prioritize the time a little bit more. So is the priority checking process? Is the priority creating a board work plan? Is the priority committee work? Those are the three biggies I've heard.
Is it work plan or goal setting?
Well, you have work planned down just from the discussion before.
Yeah.
So it's, it's kind of both. It's create, right now I have it as brainstorm two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four work plan, or that's the wrong year, it's actually two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-four work plan, create board priorities and goals.
Amanda?
Which I argue we're not gonna be able to do in four hours, but we could get a baseline of where we're going so the committees can start thinking of some work plans that's gonna get us there and then always coming back here to this, which is why I was like thinking like, if we have kind of like that timeline vision, like we could, we could have some goals around, so, give you an example, we have the budget. Budget ends in January.
Yeah.
And then we work back, backwards for August. There are some specific things that we have been saying that we need to do to get to a budget conversation that is more inclusive, so like, what are those things? What are, what are that, what is that goal, and then how, how does it relate? We need to form another committee that's like supporting the finance, just thinking, so. I think that it's important to like, we're not gonna be able to do our work on those four hours, but.
But just to take that example a little further, in my mind, what we could do is come to an agreement as a board that one of our priorities for the year is to run the budget process in a more inclusive way than we have in the past. That's something we could, through discussion, I'm not saying that's, is a decision we would make, but it's an example of a decision we could make through discussion at the retreat.
Yeah. Yeah, so my thought right here, and also with time for ours, we should probably prioritize setting priorities and goals. And then with the idea that we can start putting work plans together in later meetings and at the committee level. With the idea that committee work plans would start, would structure themselves around those priorities and goals.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and I think the, what I would add to that is what committees could do to contribute to that discussion, like the pre-work committees could do to inform that discussion would be, hey, based on what we have been doing, what are some ideas that we have for goals the board could be setting for twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-four? And that would give some focus to, rather than us just spending, you know, spending committee time reporting out, it would actually be like, that's the purpose of committees talking, or like sharing. Not that we have to have committees sharing just for the sake of it, but it feels like that's a valuable set of information, given that the committees cover different aspects of what the board cares about.
Okay. I think I'm very relative coherence.
So do, does the board wanna work on the process check?
I, I would love to, if we can. It, it feels like we could do both, and maybe we just pick one process.
Maybe we swap them too.
Again, I have a prot-, protocol where you can work on three at a time, but you're not actually dive, like, everybody's not diving into-
Gotcha.
Do you know what I mean?
Is that the word cafe thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's important, because I think we're a very new board. I know it probably doesn't feel like, and you're not particularly new, but I still feel even two and a half years in.
Newish?
New, and so I think we've learned a few lessons and learned a few things where we would like to all kind of get our bearings of ground rules and sort of pri- would like to all kind of get our bearings of ground rules and sort of processes, and that it might seem rudimentary, but I think it would be really nice to make space so that going forward, we've kind of all reached an understanding about how we want to make those decisions, or at least in the best case scenario. But maybe it's a swap, I don't know, maybe it's the priorities and goals first and then, time allowing, we get into the processes if we're worried we're going to lose time, but... I'd like to do both.
I'd like to do both, too.
I think that's right.
Swap, okay.
Sorry, what are we swapping?
Just having the processes.
Setting priorities and goals first and then doing some process.
And then just so everybody knows too, we'll get lunch at noon, so...
Oh, that's one of my questions.
Yeah, so, yes, we'll adjourn at noon, but then I hope you'll be able to stay for lunch together as well.
Going for five.
Huh?
I was going to say, you might love to stay until 5:00 o'clock.
Yeah, it might actually be better to continue a process discussion over lunch than a substantive one.
It's culture building, Jim. Got to eat.
Break the bread together.
I get hungry.
We have those hours, but yeah, we...
All right, anything else about the retreat? And feel free to keep bouncing ideas by email, especially about process examples that might be worth exploring.
The only question I have about the climate survey is, do we want to have an executive session around that, or are we, no, no?
We can.
We cannot?
There's no reason to have an executive session around that, so that would fit in the reasons for executive session, unless it's a evaluation process.
Okay, so I, so there's one thing that we should add in there, maybe before goals, right? Like we look at the climate survey and then we work on the goals and that.
Well, and we, as we talked about the equity committee meeting this morning, we could have that for the board to see before Monday morning, so that could be part of what the board, as individual board members, we spend some time digesting the climate survey results before 8:00 a.m. Monday morning, the 13th.
So, how much time would you like to add to the agenda for the climate survey?
Do we need to add time in the agenda? It can be...
Sounds like pre-reading?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
So, do you want any discussion time around that?
Yeah, that would kind of inform the, you know, what each board member is bringing to the board's discussion, that may.
That's my hope.
Yeah, so it's a pre-reading is what I was thinking.
Mandatory, not optional.
There you go.
You don't get paid for it.
You're maxed out.
Yeah, I thought it was 59.
So, you'll want to get that to us by, this is a Monday meeting?
Yeah.
So, Anna will probably get this out on Thursday or Friday next week, so...
Okay, yeah.
Do you guys want me to grab some coffee and pastries from Capital Grounds or something? Would that be?
We've got it covered.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Coffee, I need it.
Merrick?
Is the board retreat now, now?
Yes.
Next, the 13th.
Okay.
Not the 6th.
And Mia and Zach are like, oh?
Absolutely.
Do you need a note?
You need a note?
Probably not.
Okay.
I'm just letting you know.
You just let me know, you need a note.
Speaking of executive session, I think that is what is next.
I don't know about that.
And provision 10, security or emergency responsibilities, the disclosure of which could jeopardize public safety. Someone want to make a motion on those grounds?
I move that we enter executive session on safety grounds, just summarizing, security and safety grounds.
Second.
Second. Just so the public knows, that means that we're not talking about any sort of imminent threat, we're just talking about general security measures that for obvious reasons need to be public.
Gotcha.